So contractors trying to focus on completing up point A and point B. So.
Yeah, that's fine. I love that stuff.
Basically, I've got ready preparation wise.
Yeah.
It does help.
How many years have you been doing this?
It's after four.
It's pretty normal.
I thought we were. The only one.
You got so to certain point. You know it's gonna all come together. Yeah, it's gonna be my 20.
He does BCA.
That's what I had thought as well. Or like we're granted in the next.
Yeah, Ben, I think. They're about.
Sam, we have a procedural question. The two of us were under the impression that Hester was, he wanted a table.
Or extended.
Um, no, I don't think.
Yeah, it says extension request, so.
That would be extended for this approval.
Yeah. Okay, that makes more sense.
Yes.
Cool.
Okay.
Love it.
I want. English.
Zach?
That's my latest thing, say something in English, realize the second meeting.
I know it's your email, so.
Okay. Hey.
You're answering me now verbally, so.
Yes, I am.
That'll suffice.
I really appreciate you.
You alter the. You act like you've known me for eight years.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, why are we starting late?
Well, we have a biological break from our esteemed environmental commission. All right, is everyone ready?
Yes.
Seven oh one.
All right, I will call tonight's planning commission meeting to order, and I will belieffully accept a approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any additions, changes, corrections to the minutes of July 9th? If not, uh.
I move approval.
Dr. Prithrich with the motion.
Second.
And Crute with the second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Perfect. At this time, we'll do public comments for items not on tonight's agenda. So if anyone in the public has anything to say or would like to comment, step forward. In the interest of brevity and obviousness, there's nobody stepping forward, so we will continue. Number five, reports from commissions, boards, committees, and staff. Mr. Arbuckle.
So we had a Parkview Transportation meeting this morning. It primarily talked about the northwest span of the Oxford Trail system, and the staff has developed a number proposal, a number of proposed routes, and so we talked about how to present those routes to the public and to council.
All right, perfect. Dr. Prithrich?
I'm trying to think that the climate action, while I could, you know, I could let Ms. Webster talk about the climate. Yeah, I'll report from council, which is the, we had the first reading on the owner occupancy requirement of the short-term rentals, which I felt like we had a good conversation, and that seems to be moving along. I guess that's the only thing that I'll report.
For the environmental commission, we were sort of in a partnership with OKI to hopefully get some funding for solar on administrative buildings and possibly more, and that did not come through sadly, and I think that's, we'll have to report for now.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Sure, yeah. So Housing Advisory Commission met last week, and we actually discussed one of the things that we'll be talking about tonight a little bit, the cottage community. We had a big update about the Oxford area. Oh, I forgot what the S is. I'm so sorry.
Solutions for housing, maybe?
Thank you, solutions for housing. I knew the H was housing. And Anne Bailey gave us a really good report on the kinds of activities that they're going to be doing in the next few months, and she is also a member of housing. And we had a couple of other members of the OSH committee there at housing, Anne Fear and Jennifer Baylor. So it's really cool that they have been really active. I just want to shout out to community members that are, that are being really active in the problem of homelessness and other issues in Oxford. So they're going to be doing a legal aid kind of workshop in October, and so I encourage everyone to look up stuff about OSH in Oxford. I wish I had more info right this second. I also brought up some concerns that I had about, you know, how the city of Oxford can deal with issues at a place like Parkview Arms, other low-income communities that might be privately owned, and what the city can do to protect the residents of such, such locations. So we had a really good conversation. I don't think we were able to come to anything because it's a really hard and complex issue, but, you know, it's on our radar to definitely keep in everyone's minds to protect community members that are in those kinds of communities, so.
Thank you. Ms. Webster?
Yes, with Commissioner Prithrich, I attended the Climate Action Committee meeting, which was in July, and we were able to get a report from Mike Drysback, who is, I believe, the Director of Maintenance for Oxford. And basically, what we were doing was sort of hearing progress that had been made around the Climate Action Plan, because we're coming up on the one-year anniversary of its, its implementation. So we heard some nice, some nice things that have been achieved. We talked about the conversion of 607 LE, uh, streetlights from, I think, like halide to LED, which is, you know, a, a good way to reduce our carbon footprint. There was some discussion about a solar feasibility study, which I guess was, I'm not sure that's the same thing you were talking about or not, but we'll get into that in a minute. Progress on the Oates Trail, a lot of, a lot of new paving is, been installed. He also talked to us about the parking, a parking garage project that is ongoing, and progress on the art, the multimodal transit hub, which is in construction. And there are issues around stormwater management that are to be resolved, which will probably be difficult and costly, and it's something that they're trying to figure out how to future-proof the town in regard to stormwater increases. Finally, this, we've, we've moved into a quarterly meeting schedule, so that committee won't meet again until November. But David, anything you want to add? Okay.
Ms. Grue, nothing to report?
Perfect. HAPC is not having a meeting tomorrow because we had nothing tangible to talk about, so easiest report.
Miss, before, the one thing I forgot, and if I could update on what we talked about at council, I'd forgotten that one of the agenda items that I asked about, talk and discuss a little bit about more of the enforcement of our code. We often deal with the, the adoption of code and sometimes at the development stage, but what happens afterwards is more an administrative matter that we don't typically see, but the staff deals with day-to-day. And so I just kind of asked for more information on how it was going because of, you know, the walking around town, wondering whether our enforcement is up to our code expectations, and I think it was informative, and Sam shared some of the challenges, the legal challenges, the resource challenges. And I don't know what, there was a consensus other than I think people believe that our code should be enforceable practically and, you know, and so try to figure out what it takes to ensure that that happens. So I appreciate Sam had good reports. Both, we talked in general, it was somewhat provoked by some of the obvious conditions at 101 West Church, which are kind of like prompt questions about what's going on. But, so I think it was informative, it was informative for me, so I just want to thank staff for taking the time to present that.
I missed that, but I hope that council is also curious about steel beams being replaced by two-by-twelves at another location. That is, the pebbles tossed from their mothership.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
People provide an update from staff.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you want to talk about the Friday meeting.
Sure, yeah.
Just an update for anyone interested in our progress on starting the really big project for updating all of our zoning subdivision, development codes, and historic preservation design guidelines, and our first-ever historic preservation plan. So it's kind of a mouthful of all those things. We were able to wrap that all in together into one project. Council authorized staff to partner with McKenna out of Michigan, and they have a subconsultant called Preservation Forward. And our five-person committee for the kickoff meeting just met this past Friday, and we have a rough schedule. It's about at least a 12-month project to do all those four elements, and there'll be some public meetings, a dedicated website, some survey tools for people to provide feedback. So it's a, it's a big project. When we have a schedule hammered out, sort of a project management schedule, we'll share that out with the pertinent boards and commissions. But the name of the companies are McKenna and Preservation Forward. They'll be here in person, kind of doing some walkabouts in the community, type, get their handle on everything, and then presenting what they call an issues report, and what they're finding, kind of a diagnostics of what we have, and then moving forward with how to fix it, what they would recommend, and then getting feedback on that. So this was all in a city council packet, agenda item, if anyone wants to read the full proposal. But we're excited about getting that started. They definitely know what they're doing, and we're, we can definitely see that the right group was selected by the committee and council.
So could I just say about the, what the, there's a working group? I know, was that, they outlined it to be like a stakeholder group, so what is, is there a group established that will be working with the consultant?
Yes, yes, there's a five-person group that we have, and it's representative planning, representative HAPZ, and staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nothing further from me tonight.
You knew I was going there. All right, I believe we have covered number five, so if there's no objections, we'll move on to new business. PC 2024-08, 5728 College Corner Pike, preliminary subdivision for Tractor Supply. MSP Properties is the applicant agent. I will accept a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
So moved.
Dr. Prithrich with the motion?
Second.
I have a second and a third. If three more people, we don't have to vote. We'll give that one to Mr. Bracken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair Watt. So this would be the second time that the planning commission has seen this particular project. This is for the Tractor Supply Company Store that's coming to Oxford on College Corner Pike and Todd Road. So the next step in the process is to approve subdivision requests. So the planning commission is only going to see the preliminary subdivision, but as it turns out, given the simplicity of this request, because it's essentially only subdividing one property into two parcels with some dedication of right-of-way and easements, because of the relatively simple nature of it, we're actually running the preliminary and final concurrently with one another. So should this commission give its blessing on the preliminary subdivision, both the preliminary and the final would move forward to council at the same time for first and second reading. So, so let me turn on my little remote here so I can move forward. There we go. So, starting with the basic details, the developer for this project is MSB Properties of Ohio LP, under care of Mitchell Pappan, and is represented here tonight by a Mr. Nick Urbanowitz. Thank you. And the property owner is 5278 College Corner Pike LLC, care of Tim Macy. The engineer on the project is Widmer Engineering, Inc. The site area that we're dealing with that we are subdividing, or what is proposed to be subdivided, is 14.481 acres in size. The zoning classification is GB, General Business District. And once again, so the proposal is a preliminary subdivision, so this would take the 14 acres and subdivide it into two parcels. So there would be the roughly four-acre parcel on which the Tractor Supply Company Store would be constructed, and it would leave behind a nine-acre remainder parcel, which would remain undeveloped for the foreseeable future until such time as it might be sold to some other end user and developed. And with this subdivision, the reason it's a major subdivision primarily is to dedicate the necessary right-of-way and establish the easements that are going to support the development. So as opposed to doing a minor lot split, which is a little bit simpler of a process, actually a lot simpler of a process, that's the main reason for why it's coming forward as a quote-unquote "major" subdivision that entails the planning commission and council approvals. With respect to the Tractor Supply itself, so that was approved through conditional use, which, again, that was the first thing that came before Planning Commission, that Planning Commission recommended approval on, and that was approved by council on June 18th. And just to remind the commission of why that was necessary, so the way that our zoning code reads in the GB General Business District, if you have a retail use that exceeds 15,000 square feet, which this one does, it'd be about 21,000 square feet, it automatically requires a conditional use in those cases. So that was the reason for the initial conditional use. And just to revisit the site location, so this is an aerial view, and you can see the subject property highlighted with a black outline there. So this is east of Canick and Gilman's, west of Walmart. Here's a look at the zoning classifications in the area. So everything that's in red there is general business, business or GB district, and this site is also bordering Oxford Township to the east and to the north. And then here's a look at some existing right-of-way within the area. And if you recall, a major part of the discussion last time was how to properly fulfill the vision of the thoroughfare plan. And ultimately, the route that was selected as the best potential route was 15B connecting up to 5B. And so what ultimately was determined from that is that we needed some additional right-of-way to be dedicated in that kind of sharp corner there between Todd and US27 College Corner Pike, and that is now being reflected in our preliminary subdivision that we now have. Bless you. So here is a zoomed-in view of the current site boundary with the current right-of-way. So right now, the property line actually goes to the center of Todd Road, but otherwise, there's some pretty decently wide right-of-way already along 27 College Corner Pike. And then here is what the proposed subdivision would do. So it would dedicate additional right-of-way down here, as well as some additional strips along Todd and College Corner Pike. So 0.036 acres to be exact on College Corner and 1.339 acres along Todd Road. And then zooming in further, so this is the specific portion that is being developed with the Tractor Supply Company Store. This is the four acres. And then this was the original site plan that the commission would have seen for the conditional use request. So here's the footprint of the store, here's kind of the fenced-in enclosure area where there'd be outdoor merchandise stored, parking, of course, around the outer perimeter, and two ways in and out, primary off of College Corner, secondary off of Todd. And where we've arrived today, so a couple notable changes that I'll just highlight, even though these aren't necessarily directly tied to the preliminary subdivisions, but I just felt it would be prudent for me to mention them. The refuse enclosure, one of the conditions of the prior approval was to relocate it out of the front yard area, which this is right over here. So if I go back to the original, you can see that's where the dumpster enclosure was. That was not compatible with our code, but thankfully, it's been relocated to a place that is. So that is where it will be going, up in the upper northern part of the site, if you will. And then another condition of the approval was to establish a separate bike path connection. So you can see that very clearly here, that will link straight into the mobility entrances. So that seems to be moving forward very nicely, and one of the elements of the subdivision, too, is going to be this shared private access easement. And so the intention here would be whoever the end user might be for any bit of this portion of site up to the north, they are obviously going to need to take advantage of this driveway that is being created for Tractor Supply Company. This is not going to be a public street, this will be totally private. So really, it's a private easement that will have to be recorded, but what we've requested as a condition of this approval is that at least the city staff has an opportunity to review that easement language, because depending upon what that other end user might be in the future, and again, we don't have that crystal ball to know exactly who that's going to be or how much traffic it's going to generate, but there can be consequences with that in terms of the access management, managing the traffic. So there may be some changes that we might want to see along that purple area that the city needs to have the right to be able to request if and when the time comes. And so that's really the main reason the city would want to review the future easement language before it gets recorded. So that is one of the recommended conditions that we have. Another notable topic that was focused on as part of the review was the traffic study. So with any subdivision, essentially, we asked for a traffic study, and initially, we got a study with just the traffic anticipated for the store itself. Again, we don't have that crystal ball, but we did the best that we could in revising that study to try to anticipate what some of that additional traffic might be if we had some kind of a retail or shopping center development on the outer perimeter there. And what that study ultimately showed is, yes, certainly the traffic could get to the point where you would need to have some improvements along College Corner, which essentially amounts to some left-hand turn lanes into the driveway. So this slide shows kind of the potential sketch of what that could look like if and when that improvement becomes necessary. And if it came to pass that you had that future end user for the remainder portion, and their traffic that's generating the, the demand that's being generated from their use spurs the need for those improvements, they would be required to foot the bill essentially for those improvements. So with that, the recommendation is for approval, and it's only two conditions, although I will say the second one is especially beefy, so bear with me here. Condition number one is, again, just the condition about the access easement, just ensuring that staff has the opportunity to review the language and consulting with the law director as needed. And then condition number two has to do with the public sidewalk. And a lot of this actually carries over from the conditional use, but it just adds some additional clarity, and that's with respect to the frontage along Todd Road. So really, this last sentence here is being added to that condition. So the second option for compliance with installing public sidewalk along Todd, which is required by code, that whenever you develop along a public street that's lacking sidewalk, you have to build sidewalk. So we offered a payment in lieu option at the time of the conditional use. So this just clarifies that if Tractor Supply wanted to build sidewalk only along their future parcel, the four acres, but not up the rest of the nine-acre parcel that fronts along Todd, that they could choose to kind of parse it out however they want it. It's not a, either sidewalk along the whole thing or fees in lieu of the whole thing. It just kind of clarifies that it could kind of be split up 50/50, if you will. So that's what condition number two is all about. So, that's what condition number two is all about. And that basically concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Moore?
I do. So, I'm trying to understand, at one level, this is effectively like a lot split, you know? And I don't know how it work in town, it already has road frontage, but it also is a 14-acre site.
Yes.
So, this is, we're going through as a major subdivision, but effectively as a lot split. Like, we've not at all thought about how the remainder of the 14 acres would be subdivided. And when I think about 14 acres, I was trying to do the math on the GIS site, like 14 acres is probably like the Locust Street corridor. It's a decent chunk of land that ultimately have internal circulation, right? So, you know, at one level, I understand it's a really simple thing, but also, we're, at what point in time do we talk about the internal circulation of 14 acres? I mean, if this were in town and we had a grid, we would be plating out streets, you know? And 14 acres would have a number of blocks inside of it, just for example. Granted, this is a big box, commercial, whatever, but I guess the question is, if we want to ensure the intent of why we have a major subdivision code, which is to ensure the orderly layout of streets, future streets. So, what's, how will that come to be as this develops over time, so we can ensure that we get an orderly arrangement of streets across and through this 14-acre parcel? Or are we just treating it like this is kind of ingresses and egresses, like Walmart has? Yeah, so I guess I'm just trying, it's a major subdivision at which we would be thinking about those sorts of things, but we're not, aside from that easement, so.
I would characterize it as a sort of hybrid between a traditional lot split and a major subdivision. It's not quite to the level of being a major subdivision, it doesn't have any new public streets or new public infrastructure, really, that would support more than just this user. Everything that's being developed is going to be, you know, funded privately in order to establish this Tractor Supply store. And I think the intent is, it's kind of setting the stage for future possibilities. We don't know what those possibilities are going to be with the remaining nine acres, which would remain under the, I assume, the present ownership of the site, which is that 5278 College Corner LLC ownership. But then, in theory, once you have this entire site platted, you can always come back and do replats to add additional lots, to revisit the access, the circulation. And so, that kind of goes back to the point I made about making sure that at least the easement that gets recorded now for that private access way enables the city later, if there's going to be improvements, if there's going to be additional development, that we would have some say, again, in the future if things were changed.
So, would it come back as a subdivision again, for example?
It could.
Or a PUD plus a subdivision? I'm assuming that it's not likely going to be transferred as a nine-acre parcel.
So, actually, technically, this whole site is going to get platted, so to change the boundaries within the plat would take a replat at that point. So, that would be a minimum of final subdivision application.
Okay. So, if, in the future, there is commercial that starts to populate the remainder of the parcel, then it would come back to us, and at that point in time, there would be questions about public ingress and egress and that kind of thing?
Only if it's being divided.
Only if it's being divided.
Or if there's a conditional use for another footprint that's greater than 15,000 square feet, or if the code changes and requires some special zoning approval that isn't otherwise required now with our code update. So, it's hard to anticipate exactly what that might look like in the future.
So, I guess, and my final question then is, what is the right time to be thinking? I mean, we've talked about an easement that kind of gets to the interior of the site, but what if we're trying to make sure there's connectivity through the site, for example, between Todd Road and 27? Is now the time to talk about it, or is it that next?
I would almost argue the time to have talked about it has already passed, because we visited that issue with the conditional use, where we laid out the options that the thoroughfare plan presented.
Yeah.
And one of those options was a new public road, basically bisecting the site. So, the subdivision could have been done in that way, where there would have been a street that would have been constructed according to city specifications, would have dedicated right-of-way, would have installed utilities, but that vision was not ultimately chosen of the two. The vision that was instead chosen was to essentially help better enable that possibility for a realigned Todd Road with College Corner and to kind of facilitate that connector road running toward the south.
But I guess there is a distinction between the thoroughfare plan, which is concerned about major thoroughfares, and secondary local streets.
True, yes, very true.
Which are not governed by the thoroughfare plan that might be handled with the subdivision.
Okay.
So, I do have a question. With the easement, that gives the city some more-than-normal voice at the table for future development. The reason I ask that is, just thinking of subdivision splits plans with the Mayday Gun Range property, we had robust conversations about another access point on 27. Again, we don't have a crystal ball, but are there any protections inherently or that are needed for the future, so that there is use of that easement and not another driveway 100 feet away? Because it's not quite a panhandle, but we're getting there.
Right.
And I'm just worried, because the frontage is, can't quickly read, I'm sorry, no. It's sizable, so I just want to make sure that we have the mechanisms in place, so that in the future, we can say, hey, it's great you want to put XYZ, whatever there, here's the road you have to access. Are the protections there? Zoning's going to change, most likely, so I'm not worried about that, and I don't anticipate through traffic. Actually, I would be really concerned through traffic, just because, I mean, that's one big gas station to cut through to avoid a red light.
Yeah, so I guess the way I would answer that, I think you bring up a really good point, and I think it would be fair to add something to that effect as a condition, to say, if you're, if the future user of the nine acres, or users, we don't know how many uses that could support, I mean, it's a pretty big chunk, but any that are going to rely upon access from US 27, College Corner Pike, must utilize the shared access easement, as opposed to creating their own curb cut, second curb cut on 27, which staff definitely wouldn't recommend or wouldn't want to see. But there still is a lot of frontage along Todd Road, too. So, in theory, you could see development possibility where there's, you know, access, primary access even off of Todd. It's just hard to predict exactly what, how that could take shape, and there could even be access off of Todd in addition to the College Corner Pike shared access. So, again, going back to, I think, with the points that you're making, I think it would be a valid condition. It's maybe, to me, it's sort of implied with the subdivision as presented, that there's going to be this shared access and this single access point on 27, but I think to help solidify that point, that could definitely be added as a third, a third condition. Yeah, I think, I think that's about all that I wanted to say.
No additional curb cuts on College Corner Pike, I think, would just be an easy way to do that.
That'd be an easy way to do it.
Then the other, with your second condition, the seven-line manifesto, on that, when I was reading through that, and then when you presented it, I, again, and maybe I'm missing or not hearing, it gives options for the development of Todd Road sidewalk, but I didn't read it that it requires, there's any requirement or obligation for the nine-acre parcel to have any skin in the game. It almost seemed like building more flexibility for the smaller portion, but I didn't quite read or see anything obligating the northern part of that being built. Am I missing that, or is it worded in a way that?
I believe that it's obligating the entire frontage, because, again, we're talking about the entire subdivision, the whole site, all 14 acres. So, all 14 acres needs to be accounted for with this approval, whether that's fees in lieu of or sidewalk actually being built.
So, it would almost be like a deed restriction or a condition of purchase, like if they buy it, they're buying, you know, I'm sorry, if the current owner sells it to XYZ Industries and they want to build, they're buying this existing condition for that person.
Yeah, the conditions apply to the subdivision, so the subdivision will be inclusive of all future users.
All right, perfect. Mr. Mike, Ms. Webster?
Yeah, so, maybe you covered this, but I'm a little fuzzy. So, the way this is written now, the City of Oxford has a role in approving the easement if and when there's a buyer. Does it also mean that if there was more than one easement, that would be acceptable? I mean, is the intent that any kind of easement on this site is subject to approval by Oxford?
So, this condition is only specific to the access easement.
Okay.
A normal part of the process for reviewing a plat is if there's any other easements, like utility easements, drainage easements, those types of things, those would get reviewed at this time. But given that the detention is situated squarely on what will be property that is ultimately going to be the responsibility of Tractor Supply, it's pretty clear-cut as far as, like, who's going to be responsible for that, it's going to be the owner of the property. Those sorts of issues become more pertinent when you have a lot more lots that are being subdivided and responsibilities that are more distributed, that are more common across multiple owners. So, the condition here is really only specific to that purple area that I had shown before. And that is the only easement that is considered shared and private that you're approving up with this action. So, I don't think that there would be any further easements that would be necessary or would be added later.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore?
I'm curious, if, as part of the traffic study, was there any work that was done looking at potential conflicts between, say, pedestrians or bicycles, and particularly along Todd Road, I'm thinking, in terms of, if there's a future, you know, planned, future kind of bikeway that might go kind of across there, the, just thinking about the entry to Todd Road and thinking about, you know, potentials for those kinds of conflicts, was there anything that looked at pedestrian and bicycle safety?
So, to my knowledge, the traffic study was only focusing on the vehicular aspect, so it did not take into account the sidewalks or the bike paths, but certainly, they are providing for those modes of transportation with their plan. They are showing that there will be bike path built along 27, there will be a connection to the, to the future store, and the sidewalk along Todd is, of course, is getting delayed. But, yeah, the traffic study, to answer your question most directly, the traffic study did not get that detailed.
So, the bike path being that it's newer or changed since we've seen it, and I just don't know if this is part of, there's no signal, and part of the reason the city got the easement for the corner was future readjustment potentially of Todd Road, is there any consideration, and I don't know what they're called, but the solar-powered pedestrian plungers? Because if you've ever come up to Todd Road at 27, that is a giant intersection. So, I wasn't sure if that was part of it. We didn't talk about it when we first did it, but now that the bike path is more prominent, is that something in the mix? Is that to be determined?
It is not. That was not one of the recommended infrastructure improvements that, so the purpose, the whole purpose of the traffic study, just for everyone's general education, is, does the change in land use trigger a need for any infrastructure improvements that are attributable to the land use change?
Okay.
Or the potential future land uses in the subdivision? And so, the engineer that the consultant hired presented their study to our engineer, Scott Otto, who approved it.
Okay.
And so, that was not one of them. It's not a bad idea to, you know, consider that, but it was not on their list.
Okay.
And then, you're right, that is a very wide, and actually, that's one of the reasons why staff kind of, I wouldn't call it negotiating, but we're talking with Tractor Supply about, okay, if not using the through roadway on the northern section is preferable, then potentially, we could see some alignment changes that could maybe even benefit pedestrian and bike as well, because any time you have a more direct sort of 90-degree intersection, you narrow down those throats, which makes it easier for everyone.
Yeah.
So, that could be something in the 10 or 20 years in the future that we see.
Okay.
And a rapid flashing beacon could be a kind of an inner improvement, potentially.
I just think, when you take out the ones that Dana had to put in the light, you can just move them up there.
Move them over, yeah.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Moore, Mr. Perry? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to share? All right, you don't have to, I just wanted to invite you to. All right, are there any public comments on this matter? Seeing nobody moving forward, I will assume that there's nobody from the public who would like to comment on this matter, and subsequently, I will entertain a motion to close public session.
So moved.
Dr. Bertrich with the motion.
Second?
I'll give you the second. Mr. Brackett with the second again. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. All right, open discussion, friends.
So, you know, I thought, oh, this is going to be really simple and quick, but this is just, the concern is that I feel like subdivision is the time when you get the bite at the apple to envision all the infrastructure things that are necessary to serve the property. And 14 acres is a pretty big chunk of property. When I think of, for example, I was just trying to make the Bonner County website work for me, like, our Walmart redevelopment was probably 14 acres or so, you know? So, the question is, is like, I think it's fine now, but what I want to make sure is that, for example, if the remainder of the site were by right development, that didn't come through a planned unit development or subdivision, they could do things by right. And what, whether that, what that means in terms of internal access and circulation, what that means in terms of frontage, you know, on 27, we may or may not have much of a say over it. And when I think of how much effort we put in to make sure, because 14 acres, right now, it's at the edge of town, it's Tractor Supply, but 14 acres in an urban area with poor circulation becomes kind of a, we have sites like that that kind of impede our internal circulation, because we didn't do the sidewalks or the, you know, the things don't line up. So, the question is just generally, I view this as a kind of a phased subdivision, and assuming it comes back as a planned unit development, we'll get a chance to talk about how, to make sure that remaining of it is well-laid out. But that's all very speculative right now, because that, it's just kind of like speculative subdivision. I guess the question, how do we ensure that some of those issues of internal circulation that are in the intent of the subdivision, that this isn't the last time we get a chance at it, and if there is development of the remainder nine acres, that we have a say to ensure that it's functional that way? And so, I don't know what that looks like. Again, I'm presuming it'll come back, something as big as that would come in as a PUD, and then we could talk about those things. Or if it were conditional use, we could talk about those things. But if it were by right development, it wouldn't need to come back to us at all, and it could be one big parcel that didn't have any good internal circulation or connection between Todd Road and 27, or, I guess, it's just a question of how, it's the best way do we ensure that ultimately, it contributes to that, you know, that circulation system, that's the way I'm thinking about it, that our subdivision code's trying to aim for. I don't know what that answer is. So, that's, it's kind of a question, but I feel like I, maybe it would be fine, and we could pass it through, and we would come back to us, and we could ensure that the remainder was developed carefully, but how do we ensure that? That's my question.
Question?
I'd support a condition, especially if staff had a recommendation that would allow us to make sure that it didn't happen that way, that we had some control, because, as you're saying, it's at the edge of town, and it seems very easy now, but of course, that's the way it's expanding up 27, and so, we don't want to cause problems in the future when we could have solved it right now. Or at least, lay the groundwork for solving them.
Question for staff and our esteemed Juris Doctors. If we put a third condition on access restrictions or a condition of must-have staff approval, because I also don't want to limit something that we didn't think about, I don't want it to be like, oh, you bought it, and you can't put it there, and we're like, oh, wait, we didn't think of this. Would that type of condition, because I mean, most of what we're concerned about, I think, is the unknown of future realignment, future traffic, those kind of things. Personally, and just, if they have nine acres and they want to put, you know, a fast-food restaurant dead in the middle of it by right, I mean, go for it. But I'm more concerned with some of the traffic controls and the, things that could be obstructed, obstructive, sorry. Are there things we could put in place that... Are there things we could put in place that would help us if it didn't come back? Because I can see a number of things, the only reason this came in front of us, not this, the first one is because of square footage, had nothing to do with anything other than six thousand square foot over. So, between the three of you, is there anything we're missing or something we could put in that would allow flexibility, but some kind of guidance?
I think the way my recommendation would stand, the simplest way to put that or to word that third condition would just be to say, there shall only be one curb cut off of 27, and that curb cut is the one that's being built with this project and supported by the easement. And then, to answer the, kind of the second part of what you mentioned, to me, I think if there's going to be multiple users, likely, there's going to be subdivision that occurs, and if you subdivide what has already been platted once before, that's going to take an additional approval to come forward, to reexamine the access, to reexamine the easements, the circulation, all of that would have to get reexamined at that time. If they get lucky and there's, you know, one end user that could consume effectively the entire nine acres by right, and they can pull it off with the existing easement and the frontage and not add an additional curb cut on 27, then maybe that's okay. It seems doubtful that they could get by with that without a conditional use today, given if you exceed fifteen thousand square feet, you've got to come forward for that conditional use. So, that'd be the way I would summarize it.
And I would also add that this part of town, since there's not a visionary township land use plan that shows where thoroughfares might connect in the future, and so, we don't have a kind of prescribed grid, and so, to superimpose that on a future development would be, I think, pretty restrictive on the creativity for someone to kind of design the site. So, I think it's a fairly low risk, since we don't have our own plan that says where roadways will be for a, beyond the thoroughfare plan that you've already seen. So, I think I would agree with Zach that there's a pretty high likelihood that we will see another split of some kind here that would utilize this shared access point.
So, I guess just push on that one, because that's kind of like, I mean, I agree with you, I just want to make sure we've not missed the scenario in which someone could develop the remaining nine acres in a way that would involve internal circulation of cars, back and forth between Todd Road, that people would be walking through and across that wouldn't come to us.
Well...
If it were like, if it were like a shopping mall, for example.
Sure, and yes, that could very, that could very likely happen, a large user, and I think our code is written well enough that that circulation, that's, the circulation requirements are embedded in the code, and they have been for eight years now. And so, I think by council appointing you and you working with us and our various consultants over the years, there's enough in the code that we don't have to bring every project back to this body for review again, and we should be empowered to administer the code and approve plans that comply with the spirit of the ordinances. And so, if you want to review every project of this scale that comes back, then you need to ask city council to create that threshold, so that a project over a certain threshold will come back regardless of what the use is. But right now, that's not the way it's written.
So, we have an access easement, and the two of you talked about future lot splits as an example. Is there a scenario, and I don't want to write this in there, but right now, it's a private property access easement, and I think of the one Walmart that goes into the, where the furniture store and things are there. So, future tenants have the right to that, but just thinking ahead on a lot split, we have ordinance that say, you know, must have so much frontage on a road or a public street. Do you envision anything limiting future lot splits, or is there a scenario where that could become public easement in a public street, you know, they hand it over as part of a subdivide or some land swap or something where that stuff, which is just an easement now, could be recalibrated as a street or conditional access? Because I know we have requirements for square footage or linear footage, frontage, so I just, I'm thinking that...
One hundred feet for general business.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I envision that middle, if they divided it in three, three and three, that middle third might be up a creek, depending how they lay it out, so I just want to make sure we weren't forgetting about that.
So, if they ever, if the owner of Tractor Supply ever wanted to request the city accept it as public infrastructure and create a public street, there's a process for that. And so, the city engineer would probably look at the current decide and say, well, this is insufficient to be considered a public street, but we could allow it under these certain circumstances. But probably the way that it's designed right now, it doesn't have the depth and the width to meet that standard.
Even though it's wider than an alley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Good question.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion questions, comments, concerns, epiphanies?
It's a, we're just hoping that some of these scenarios that we're talking about don't happen, you know? I mean, I think there could be administrative lot splits up Todd Road, right? There could be outlots, parcel by parcel by parcel, that could be, that would not necessarily fall, like, you know, I, I'm just, I've been at this long enough to want to game the scenarios so that we just don't come back and say, gosh, I wish we had had some review, but, you know, if we trust your sense of the odds of this not coming back or not being, then I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we don't regret having that.
Well, the way I see it, so, this is a preliminary subdivision request that involves the two parcels, so if that nine acre parcel was ever going to be split in any way, to me, then you need to revise the preliminary before you take forward the final. So, to answer your question, you had posed like, what if there's going to be splits along Todd Road? That's going to take a preliminary, to revisit the preliminary subdivision in order to do that.
Okay, the code's written right now.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Zach, you mentioned the curb cut stipulation earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Do you still recommend that, or not that you...
I would.
...many of the threats is an option.
Yeah.
So, we would still want that, right?
Yes, sir?
Yeah.
I'll go there. Switch tables.
I'm not going to say anything earth shattering here. I'm the law director, I don't pretend to have specialized knowledge on land use and planning the way our subject matter experts have, but I think that the idea of putting something in there to make it clear what your intention is for the broad interest of the public, like, there's only going to be one curb cut on 27, makes a lot of sense to do it now. But I think the one thing that's been lost in the discussion, though, is Tractor Supply's a large company, national footprint, they've got a pretty good idea of what they need to do to protect themselves in the transaction to acquire the property as well as it relates to some of these issues. Now, I would hope that they have taken care of some of those interests, because they don't want to see a sale happen to these other nine acres that would negatively impact their interests as well. So, that's just a big point I wanted to make.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moore, do you feel confident and comfortable with my thoughts on a third condition, you know, allowing flexibility, but kind of guiding that really hard steer towards the shared easement use versus 27, additional 27 curb cut access? Because there's also a bike trail there, so that kind of goes against, sorry. If we had another curb cut there, I think it would fly in the face of other decisions and theories we have with curb cuts and sidewalks and bike trails, so. Are you comfortable, do you have an idea of how to quickly word that? If I'm giving the vibe...
I would just word it as simply as saying, there shall only be one curb cut along 27 College Corner Pike.
Do we need to clarify one curb cut for the whole...
As shown on the proposed plan.
Okay.
As shown on the proposed plan or as agreed to?
Yeah, because I was going to say I could...
At a later date in the future, because that could change a little bit.
Okay, perfect. That would be my request. As the chair, I don't necessarily believe in making motions, so I just got my heavenly hint in.
I support that motion.
Thank you. All right.
It was a motion.
Do you want to make the motion?
Yes.
All right, that's what I thought you were saying, and then I was like, wait. So, Mr. Bracken with the motion, and just to clarify, for the record, for public and for all of us, as I hear, your motion is to accept the recommendation of staff with the two conditions presented by Mr. Moore and the additional condition, steering but allowing staff guidance on any future curb cut based on circumstance.
I think I'd ask that you do a motion first to add the third condition, and then, once that third condition is approved, then you would add it to the general motion.
Okay.
So, two step.
I move to add a third condition.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to add a third condition. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Perfect.
I move to make the recommendations previously spoken of.
Perfect.
Including the third condition.
Including the third condition, exactly.
Do you have a crafted sentence? Just so the record for those watching at home or...
I think we've got it recorded in three different places.
You want a fourth?
Yeah.
She's got rid of it now.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure I don't get an email. All right.
Is there a second?
Yeah, do I have a second to the second motion? Ms. Webster with the second of the aforementioned three-part condition motion. All right, this will be a roll call.
All right, I'll start with Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Webster?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Arbuckle?
Yes.
Mr. Prithrich?
Yes.
Mr. Crueth?
Yes.
And Mr. Watt?
Yes. All right, the motion and all its entertainment passes, so thank you very much, appreciate your patience and effort, I guess, because there's a lot that goes into these people don't see. All right, moving on. PC 202309, 5234 Hester Road, preliminary and final development. This is for the twelve residential cottages, and this is for an extension request. So, I'm not sure which one of you, Mr. Moore will be back up. So, as long as I get a motion to adjourn to public hearing, we can bring Mr. Moore back on the hot seat.
So moved.
Mr. Bracken with the motion.
Second.
Chair Rosenberg with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're in public session. Mr. Moore?
I'm going to make this the hot seat, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
That is fine by me, sir.
So, this is particular to the cottage community at 5234 Hester Road. There was a preliminary and final planned development application that council had approved in September of 2023. It's going to be twelve units, and this will be an affordable housing development, and the applicant has been diligently pursuing the approvals for this project. Essentially, they've got all of the approvals secured for the permit, the permit has not yet been issued, but it looks like there's an additional funding source that would require that the site be owned in fee simple by the property manager. The previous plan, if you will, was for the city to retain ownership of the property. The city still owns the property, it's about two acres in size, north of what used to be the Baymont Inn. So, the applicant, the developer's needing some additional time in order to secure that funding, finalize the financing, and ultimately, get started on the project. So, the zoning code does provide for the ability for a one-year extension on a planned development, and that's per Section 114509B, so that would be for a one-year period, and this would, if approved, it would revise the deadline for substantial establishment, that's the term that our code uses, substantial establishment of the development to no later than September 19th of next year, 2025. Happy to take any questions, and we do have Ms. Mueller in the audience, who I'm sure could answer any questions that you have as well.
Perfect. Do you have anything you want to share off the bat, or does anybody have any questions?
I have a general question. So, we have a similar situation occurring with Habitat for Humanity properties, where they can only get some of their funding if they are given ownership, and I believe we're currently working on writing up stipulations to make sure if things don't go as planned, that we can sort of have some clawback provisions. Will we be working on that for this going forward? I know this is just an extension of the time period.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Easy. All right, are there any members of the public that would like to talk, or, I'm sorry, comment? All right, seeing none, I will accept a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Dr. Berthridge?
Why don't you say one factoid? That there was, when I was on vacation last week, there has been a revised draft that had already been circulated regarding the purchase.
Okay.
We're well on our way towards that, and it is accordingly.
Fantastic.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second to adjourn from public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none? All right. If anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, not to minimize this or...
I just want to comment, I just have a lot of support for this project, it's been going on a while, but that's because, you know, we want to do it right, we want to get the right funding. I know that Mindy's been working super hard, as usual, I owe her an email. So, I just, I just want to say that I'm sure everyone is on board with this, but I very much support an extension.
Yeah, whatever they need to make this happen.
Whatever it takes.
Appreciate it.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to minimize it as procedural, but I, in my opinion, it's very straightforward.
All right.
If there's no opposition, I will gladly accept a motion to approve or deny.
So, move to approve.
Dr. Berthridge with a motion to approve, Mr. Bracken with a motion, a second to that motion, and this is, well, is this a roll call?
I think...
Voice vote work? We've already voted on the concept, this is just an extension, so voice vote work?
Yeah.
Probably not, why?
We browbeat the three of them into compliance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, the extension is granted. All right, I will gleefully accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion and a second right there. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anybody guess my word of the day?
Gleefully.
Thank you, I said it four times.
I heard it.
I said it four times.